I think it's, she just turned it on.
We're gonna wait a second. We don't start making.
Well, it is, isn't it?
Nope. Can sit here and say?
Yeah. We need to adjust that. Yeah, you gotta change our clock. Camera, that thing on the wall with numbers.
Clock.
Clock, yeah, there we go. Need to adjust it to, set it to the right time.
We'll wait another week, I'll have to do it anyways.
Oh, that's right.
Saturday. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We're gonna call this work session to order. We have just a few items of business, but we're gonna have some good discussion here. Our first item of business is our city administrator's report. I'll turn some time over, Jack, for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go quickly through stuff in the finance department. Dan is working on a wrap-up of the fiscal year 2016-2017. We will likely have one final budget amendment to address. There were a lot of capital expenditures that occurred that were intended to be, once we got to the end and knew how much we had to transfer over exactly, we would do that. Dan has pretty much got his hands around it, but we want to make sure we're exact. So that'll happen maybe for the 7th, if not the 7th, maybe the 21st, to get fiscal years 16, 17 wrapped up. The utilities department, this one is the photograph you have, aerial photograph, by itself, it doesn't look like much, but when you get the explanation, it's oh. We have been preparing to do an insitiform slip-line of a sewer line that runs up behind, this is Golden Living Center off of Hospital Drive. And you can see the back of the car dealership, or the car repair place with the cars on the left, and then the apartments on commercial on your right. The two circles with the line in it represents a sewer line. Our plan was to slip-line that using some of the funds associated with the INI sump pump fee that we have, 78,000, 80,000, in. In preparation of that, ran a camera down, it got stuck, ran a jetter down, it got stuck. We have a lot of INI coming out of the pipe. So we looked at it from, had our emergency contractor come out and give us an evaluation of it. Based upon that, we believe we need to move forward with an emergency contract to just cut Decker loose to fix one manhole that has a collapse in it. And the rest, 200 feet of sewer line, that we believe is separated, so it's a double whammy. We're getting INI from a groundwater source that's coming into our system substantially, and we likely are placing waste into the ground right in this area as well. So we need to get it resolved. The total, worst-case scenario, is 23,000. We have tripled that in our budget, but we need to get it done. If we put it out for bid, it's gonna be January or February when the ground's frozen trying to fix a leaking sewer. So we need to move quickly. We can have them on-site, potentially by the end of this week. I just wanted to give you a heads-up. We're gonna declare it an emergency because we're likely putting waste into the ground. That'll be part of their job as well, when they tear it out. The only significant delay is, as soon as we cut them loose, and I did not check with Bob before the end of the day, they'll have to order a manhole and have it made. Depending on where it's from, it could be anywhere from three to five days. So it may be they have to wait until next week to do it. But it's in a horrible area. We can't get our equipment back there. They have big equipment, they can get back in there. This is a big, steep hill behind the north side of Golden Living Center, so we're gonna be moving on that.
It slopes to the north?
It slopes downhill to the north, yes. The street department finally was able to get the MoDOT stuff worked out on 134th to get the rest of the paving done. So Rock Creek entrance has been repaired, and the base was corrected properly. Now the cap's on it, and 134th now has a fix. We couldn't adjust what we wanted to adjust, so it took us a little while to get that done, but they are now done with that. The parks department, they had their charity fundraiser over the weekend, it went fairly well. Raised money, or raised a little bit of money for Shop With The Cop. It raised, a large amount of food was delivered for the charitable donation, they'll be making that this week. And they're already working on next spring's recreation events. So as we get that more organized, we'll come back to you with where we're at on that. Police department has two new officers that will be at the November 7th meeting for swearing-in and introductions. One of them started today, and one of them will start Wednesday. Development department, over 140 building permits. Clay Creek is installing curbs this week and will be paving next week. The Villas of Smithville has broken ground, and they'll be working over the winter to get ready to pave in the spring. From the capital improvement project standpoint, Hawthorne Rehab is nearing its final phases. The curbs are in, they're planning on paving Wednesday, and continuing that until they get it done. There's a chance they can have all of the paving done on Wednesday, if not, it'll be Thursday.
Paving last step?
No. It's the last major step, but now there's finished grade, they gotta put sod in, and a few touch-up, plus they've gotta put all the signs back in, all that stuff. So that'll be working. We have, for bids, we have, the Amory culvert replacement bid comes in Wednesday, we'll have a better idea of the numbers, where that puts us Wednesday. And on the street now, as of last week, the marketing and the website redesign are both on the street. I anticipate the 15th for website, the 21st for marketing, potentially November 4th for both, if not, or, excuse me, December 4th for both to be to the board for approval. The goal with the marketing is to, it sets on the 21st, the following week, we will be able to get that one to the EDC for their recommendation on which one of the applicants, because this is an RFQ, RFP kind of combined. We want both price and performance quality. So we'll have to evaluate that and get that to the EDC for a recommendation. Lastly, Communities of Excellence 2026, that was put in the budget. It's part of the Baldridge Foundation work. I don't know if you're aware of the Baldridge Foundation and what they do with entities, but it's a management performance program, and Communities of Excellence is a derivation of that, using Baldridge principles, but it's a lot different. It's the same but different, I think, that's the best way to describe it. It will involve a lot of work. We will be talking to you all, talking to various community stakeholders associated with it. Luckily, we've already done a lot of the work. The Branding Initiative survey that was performed in 2015, 2016, gives us a large foundation. You've already done the mission, vision, and values, so the hardest part of this, initially, we'll be getting a community profile that lays out who we are, what we are, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, et cetera. And so we've done a lot of that nibbling around the edges, this'll be a full bike. Learned a lot at the seminar in Tempe, so if you have any specific questions, that's staff report.
I do have.
Oh, sorry. What is the potential impact to the folks with the sewer line stuff?
To be quite frank, where this is, ultimately, this'll slow down the flow that's coming in, but we don't think any properties directly are gonna have to worry about backups or anything. This is more of a, we'll just be able to cut the flow. That sewer is running.
Where does that flow coming on?
It comes right through downtown. It comes.
I mean, it's going into the sewer.
Yeah, it's underground, where the water's, it's groundwater coming into our sewer. And we, the pipe has to have separated, we can't get either the camera or a jetter through it. The camera can't see because it's underwater. So we believe it's completely separated, but we won't know until we dig it up.
Also, where do the manholes go?
It's, I don't know which end, it's one of those ends. We're gonna come out of the manhole that's good and keep it active with new pipe as we come out, and then go down to the bad manhole, completely demolish it, and then reconnect the old stuff. All this'll have to happen live.
And then, are we anticipating, you may not know the answer, are you anticipating that we'll replace that official line?
This section is completely replaced. Once we get this done, then it'll allow us to see if we can then come back and do the insitiform, which is what we wanted to do. This came out, in the discovery phase of insitiform, oh crud, we can't do that. Total collapse.
On Clay Creek, I noticed, is there going to be a right turn lane? Do you know off the W into that section?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Don't know the timing of that, they have to pull a MoDOT permit, and I haven't seen anything from Mike Sanders. But they have already prepped, that's what the prep is, you can tell.
That's what I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I've been being asked, thank you.
Any other questions for that?
I guess on that same line, just a reminder, in between, what is it, Rock Creek and Clay Creek, that strip of land is commercial? Still zone commercial?
No, Lakeside, or Lake Meadows and?
Yeah, maybe it's like that.
Yeah, Lake Meadows.
So that road, they're not gonna connect that, it's just gonna be strictly off the W.
Yeah, they're only, because they don't own that land.
Right.
Ultimately, when that land develops, however many years down the road, the goal will be to provide.
Right.
Access through there.
Okay.
Because Corbin, the road going south from, through Clay Creek, is massively wide compared to most roads. It's designed for the commercial traffic.
Very good. We'll move on to item number four.
I'm going to approve Resolution 451 to contract with SGR for city administrator's search purposes.
Second.
Second by all in the board. Before we get into discussion, I just want to let the board know that the search committee, Melissa, Matt, and the committee's elected Jeff to chair that committee, so he will be spearheading a lot of this, and we appreciate his efforts. But that, having said that, we, the committee carefully looked at several companies, recruitment firms, some of the bigger ones in both regionally and nationally, and all three of us came to the agreement that we believe SGR will be by far our best option. There are other cities here in the metro area that are currently using SGR or have used them, and we've contacted a couple of them, and they've been very, very pleased with what they've been doing. So I just wanted to, well, for discussion.
I would just piggyback on that. We are using the ICMA guidelines for how to go about this, and they've got a lot of information, if anyone's interested, I'm more than happy to share that. You know, different steps, things to think about, sample contracts, sample job descriptions, all sorts of really good information, and so that's been a great tool for us. SGR is who we believe is the best one to help, as the mayor said, to work with in several cities. You might know the person who will likely head our search for us, Kirk Davis, who'd been the city administrator last time for a long time, and very successful with his work there. And so we've talked to those area communities, and they spoke very, very highly of the word.
Melissa?
I believe you transpose the numbers, I think you said 451 instead of Resolution 541.
Then let me amend that to 541.
Give me a second. Reschedule.
Reschedule. Brilliant, thank you for catching that. Any discussion by board members? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving Resolution 541, contract with SGR, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion back, cares. Let's move on to item number five. This is, we don't need a motion to listen to Todd, but we've asked Todd Goffey as our financial advisor for the city to come and discuss ways of funding our general utility products, projects for the CIP 2020 fund. So I'll turn with, with that, I'll turn over to Todd, and we'll, and we'll review our discussion. Thank you, Mayor, thanks for having me here tonight. For this is a discussion, kind of a carry-forward, of what we talked about last month, the downtown street scape project, and then we'll talk briefly about issuing lease purchase tax financing for sewer improvements, which is kind of a recap from what we talked about previously, and then finally, talk a little bit about the second street grid, which I understand is kind of an emergency repair type situation. So I've got, put together a presentation, I've got hard copies as well that I can kind of leave behind once we kind of go through this. But spurting out with the downtown street scape that we talked about last month, the thought is to go and vote general obligation bonds. This is fairly common for cities, and you just don't have that amount of cash sitting there and available to spend on this type of a project. So many times, storm drainage streets, we would see cities go to the voters, ask for approval of general obligation bond issues, impose a debt levy, a property tax debt levy, that would be a funding source to repay those bonds. So looking in 2018, you would have the building to go to the voters in April, August, or November, all three of those election dates are four-sevenths. If you would try to pick an odd one, which really February would be the only one that would be the odd one, it'd be a two-thirds. So we try to stay away from two-thirds in the true elections whenever we can. When you get into an even, or an odd number of years, like we are in this current year, the only election that's four-sevenths is April. So from a timing perspective, you've got three good options in 2018 for election dates. The numbers that we had just ran last month, just kind of as a talking point, just to kind of get started with the discussion, I think your engineers actually had an estimate of just under two and a half million, but if we amortized out two and a half million dollars over 20 years at three and a half percent, you would be looking at $176,000 debt service payment each year. And if you go to the next slide, what, that $157,000 payment, what does that mean to you and to the taxpayer? So you currently have an assessed valuation established by Clay County Assessor of $140 million. We believe that will certainly grow over time, but currently, it's about $140 million. You don't have a debt service levy in place right now, so you're really starting with a zero balance, and you would want to grow that balance over time. And so you'll see that we believe somewhere around a 12 to 15 cent debt levy is what you would need to establish right away on that $140 million tax base in order to generate enough money to make your debt service payment and have a little bit to build up a balance. So what does that 12 to 15 cents mean to a homeowner? If you have a $200,000 home, residential property in Missouri, as you no doubt probably know, is assessed at 19%, so that $200,000 home has a $38,000 sets factor. And then when you apply that 12 to 15 cent range on the debt levy to that $38,000, you end up with an annual tax increase of around $45 to $57 a year. So if you have, you know, if your home is, has a market value greater than 200,000, you're gonna pay a little bit more. If your home is valued under 200,000, then you pay a little bit less, and what, what we're showing. The financing is very similar to school bonds, other cities that issue general obligation bonds and impose a debt levy, that's, you know, it works the same that you may already be familiar with. In terms of timetable, if you said, you know, we'd like to look at an April 3rd, 2018 election, then we back up to the filing deadline, January 23rd is the filing deadline. So between now and January 23rd, we need to have Gilmore available, draft up, and Oregon's calling for a bond election with necessary ballot language. That would need to be provided to the Clay County Election Authority on that date prior to 5:00 PM. Should the election pass, the debt levy gets imposed, when you set your levies, next September 1st, it goes out with tax bills, and then from a practical standpoint, you really wouldn't have any tax revenue available to you till probably January of 2019. So it's, you know, a little bit of a timeframe. We would certainly take that into account as we're structuring the bonds, making sure that when you have that first payment, that you've got sufficient monies in your, in your bank to cover, to cover that. That's kind of it with, with the street scape. Maybe I'll just pause there, see if there's any additional questions that, that you might have this week.
What's the chances of financing it with the sales tax? The reason I ask that is because a lot of the residents in this town have seen their property tax go from zero to quite high, because property values have gone up. I know the property values of my street used to be 1930s homes, and everybody in the last five years has updated the property values of a house that you've had forever at double. And I think a property tax might be difficult to sell to some of the longtime residents that are really still irritated over their property tax going from zero to whatever it is today. Is a sales tax a viable option if this fails? Because I see this, I see having trouble getting a property tax increase to pass, I really do.
Sales tax is a viable option. What we will see many times is a combination of voting general obligation bonds, but at the same time, maybe voting a new sales tax to where you could use, instead of imposing that 12 to 15 cent debt levy, you use the revenue that's coming from a sales tax and use that instead of the debt levy. The problem, the challenge with that is it requires two ballot questions. So you'd have one question to approve the bond issue, and a second question to approve a sales tax. To my concern with that, obviously, that if our residents see two ballots, you vote increasing their tax, would they agree to?
But they're more likely to vote to increase the tax that a million tourists a year to come to here help provide for, so they don't feel like they're carrying the whole burden themselves. That's how they sold it, again, the sales tax, but we didn't used to have a sales tax. That's how they sold it, was that it allows the tourist trade to help carry some of the financial load.
I have two questions. Could we go back to the slide before this? If our current assessed valuation's about $140 million, if during the 20 years of a bond, then our valuation goes up significantly, would the tax automatically then decrease with that service? It could, and then there's a separate tax levy calculation that Dan goes through each year, it's called Form C, and it's separate and apart from the other tax calculations. But if you have significant growth, and we have leveled debt service, then that levy could be low. Because I can see that as we grow the community, that if we do have that debt levy, then that would be reduced because we have more people contributing to that from the assessed valuation. I'd say, Todd, do you have one?
I do have one. Did you say you had a copy of this presentation?
I do.
Can we get it so we can take notes on it?
Absolutely.
And this is based on, on the 2.5 million, is that what this is based on?
I know last month, I think we talked about whether it was just a general obligation bond, just for a street scape, or looked at a general obligation bond for like, just all capital improvements, that it could be worded such to include the street scape and the new police station, just anything considered capital improvements.
Like the new bridge, that we need, things like that. I was, you know, that's kind of what I thought we were tracking to.
Instead of having to go back to the voters again for something else, trying to be somewhat more all-encompassing than going to the voters just one time.
Which is why I thought a sales tax would better fit that scenario.
I agree. I would be more in favor myself of trying to promote a sales tax, because it's not just the residents of Smithville that's going to be coming downtown Smithville or driving on our roads.
My second question goes along with that. In 20 years, this bond issue that we've had, and just trying to reduce, or if we do something with sales tax, and I know that, I know that many of our older residents aren't very in favor of the, they have not been paying property taxes for 20 years, and then the board raises the, raising property taxes, and I would agree with all in the board, if we have a sales tax, because lots of price drop is up there, and it's more commercial, I would think the sales tax, having to be created if we have an additional sales tax in order to capitalize that to. That would, and if we want to make it a CIP private sales tax or whatever the case is, then we do have one with the commercial helping pay for that rather than the property taxes and the home penalty, the K for the school, et cetera.
You do lose all the commercial building property tax.
Yes.
At 32% versus 19%, so that's the trade-off.
Yeah.
Because none of the businesses would be paying anything.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
As long as, yeah, that's the trade-off.
If you have the sales tax, would you?
Correct.
And as we look at this, I think one thing that we need to keep in mind is that it won't be terribly long in school, and you need to go back to the ballot, and they'll open relatively full.
And the park department.
We just see two increases this time around, that the library and the school will now just be hitting us with our tax bills we get next week.
So.
Well, I do think we have a community who's willing to pay for those amenities, that's how they pay for it, I think is where we've got to figure out.
My opinion is that we will hit on the sales tax. If you look, if you look at our sales tax rates compared to other cities, we're not very bottom, or we're far from top. So I think.
If you want to compare us from a tax rate, Platt City's at 2.3, 2.5, Carney's at 2, we're at 1.5, so 25% and 42% higher from a property tax. They're at 67 cents per hundred, we're at 45, and they're at a dollar eight. So either side of the, we're still lower than the two communities.
Or both sales tax.
What would like a, like a half-cent sales tax look like as far as revenue?
150-ish?
Per year?
Yes.
So that's a lot of money.
And if we're looking, if we're to finance this, here, that would be 176,000 a year, 400,000.
Yes.
Impacting your pocketbook, Mr. Goffey's identified 45 to 57 with the property tax rate, add a half-cent sales tax to your grocery bill and any other sales tax, sales you make, you will likely pay more in sales than you will in property. But others will help. That's the benefit.
But I think the thing of it is, is that the citizen's more likely to, to vote for a sales tax than they are a property tax, because I still get complaints from people being, "New year, when there were no property taxes, and now I'm paying property taxes, and the valuations on their houses have gone up." Mine's gone from 84,000 to 207,000 dollars, I haven't done a thing to it.
But keep in mind, Hancock means. But keep in mind Hancock means that the levy is dropped for every year it drops.
Tell us my tax bill.
I fully understand that, but on average, that's the whole, Mr. Goffey had identified Form C. That's the form that you have to, Dan has to fill out every year that. Whoops. That it reduces, it reduces our tax levy. We were approved 29 or 30 years ago at 70 cents when we re-instituted it. Hancock had brought that down to 44 over time.
Probably if we do a bond issue like we're talking about here, the property tax, that locks us into just one project. And so then what do we do with the next project? We do a sales tax, it's an ongoing thing and we have a lot of other things to do besides just a streetscape.
I think Mr. Goffey may need to address how that could work. If we do a bond with some property tax revenue, it would be down the road, near payoff, but before the expiration, you could go back to the voters with another bond request and keep that same levy?
Could, I mean, the only thing, you go back to the voters to approve any bond issue.
But that's the typical example of a no tax increase bond issue. You have an existing levy that sits 17 years down the road before you pay off your existing, you come back.
I think your difficult part with that is going to be explaining that it's not going to raise your tax. Anytime you see something on there and it says tax, yes or no, it's going to.
But technically, your taxes could go down, so others could look at it, it's still an increase. Not going to be a true increase, but there's a possibility of your taxes going down.
Sure.
So.
Also, one of my concerns would be if we look at just the school bond issue this last November, it was a third attempt and they tried to get that. If you look at some of the fire ward challenges they've had, they have an increase in property taxes. And I think if we as a city were to come back and ask for a property tax increase, I believe that would be an uphill battle to win. Whereas I believe a half cent sales tax increase where it's shared by not just people who shop in Smithville residents, but it's shared by all the other people who come to Smithville that spend their money here. So that would be, that would be my opinion.
And you can always shop somewhere else.
And some people would.
Yeah.
They currently do.
Yeah, I have, recently I had a resident come from, when you were talking about, he said, "Well, with that 1% CIP tax, well, it's going to raise, I'm going to pay more taxes." And I asked the resident, I said, "How much do you spend on food a year?" He said, "About $3,600." I said, "So over the course of a year, you would be paying an additional $36." That's $3 a month. Can you make that trip down the very road or elsewhere and make an economic improvement for it?" And he admitted that to me.
The bigger purpose for having Mr. Goffey today was twofold, to talk about this and we probably need to, if we're going to do something for the April ballot, we kind of need to get moving on that.
So what, yeah, exactly, what do we need to do?
Well, we have until January 23rd to have an ordinance that puts it on the ballot.
Is there any way to do a citizen survey to find out what would be more palatable? Because I would hate to put something on the ballot and then have it fail because you're right back to zero.
I think what we'd have to do, decide what we're going to do, and if it's a sales tax, then it would be our responsibility to have meetings and discuss with the citizens what we're going to put on the ballot and why.
So is it the opinion of board members that we should proceed with half cents?
Well, keeping in mind that we don't have it on the agenda to, we can certainly bring something forward at the next meeting to make a direction, but we do not have it on the agenda for a motion.
Thanks for being here.
I think it'd be good for us to get a little bit of community feedback before we.
And we have time. We certainly have time to prepare that. But if we're going to do it, if not now, when?
At the time, we need to be looking at it very seriously.
So with that, I mean, for that discussion, could we have like a list of what some of the projects are that you think folks are wanting to have done? That would be kind of.
We have an existing CIP list. We can update the numbers on where we're at on that and give us a better idea. The 2.5 was just for the streetscape portion. It didn't include the bridge out here or any of the other things. We'll be talking about that second half here in a bit unless, but ultimately with those projects, we need to be looking longer term out there. The CIP tax, if we do the sales tax, it's going to give us funds so that we can do the first batch of projects, but we're going to have a whole new process starting at the end of next year for the CIP for 2020 to 2025. So that cycle needs to be something that we are focused on so that we can continue to address the needs, improve streets, et cetera.
Yeah, but we do, we need something concrete.
Absolutely.
Definitely so that we can tell people, you know, we just don't say, hey, we're raising your taxes for nothing. So I know that.
May I make a suggestion? Let's let Todd finish his presentation.
The second, the second half is more intriguing to me.
Let's talk about that before we want to talk about what we're going to probably get out of there. Is that okay with everybody? Well, this is very, very helpful and before we move off the sales tax, the other, the other part of this, you shouldn't put the sales tax as a supplementary and then just do the projects on a page you go basis. But with 450,000 a year, it's going to take you five years collections before you could build up enough to do the streetscape. So the sales tax by itself is, provides a funding source, but if you wanted to do the projects right away, you would still need to match that and pair that with a geo bond issue.
Would it be possible to do a sales tax in April followed by a bond issue in August or November?
Yes, you could. You know, we just need to think through, I mean, these are kind of policy type calls for the board, but you know, people would say, "Well, why are you coming to me now in August? Why didn't you do this in April if you knew this is what you wanted to do?" So you know, there's, we just need to talk, talk through the mechanics of whether people get hung up with two elections, two ballot questions at one single election.
Sure. Would it be cheaper to have both questions on one ballot versus splitting it up?
The cost for an election question is, it's probably $10,000. I mean, adding another, adding another question to about, just to do an election, I think it's about $80,000 and $10,000. And adding another question about, it'd be part of that same cost.
Well, it'll incrementally increase it. It brings the cost up a little bit, but each item you add adds, makes that price go up a bit.
But it's still much cheaper than issuing two different ballot questions at different times.
But you still have to look at the last fire ward election where the people voted to build a firehouse and then vetoed manning it. So we've got a firehouse, but nobody, because they separated it out and recognized the cost is a finite cost to build it. It's a recurring cost to man it.
Well, if we get the tax approved, I mean, we're still going to get that funding year to year, right? I mean, we just, this bonding just to kind of get, accelerate some of it.
Sometimes putting two things on the ballot to do one thing is surprising when you get the election results.
Yeah, I was just. So, okay, thank you, Mayor. So the next discussion is labeled certificates of participation on page five. This is something we talked about before, commonly known as lease purchase financing. Certificates of participation is just kind of a fancy word. Many times we call those COPs, but it's basically a lease purchase that kind of takes the form of a bond issue. But the key on lease purchase financing is it's always subject to any incorporation pledge because the voters are not approving the certificates of participation. This governing body is the only approval that's needed. This is what we've talked about for a couple of years now, using this as the city has done in the past for the upcoming sewer improvements. And in the case of sewer improvements, as we've discussed previously, those payments can be coming from the operation of the water and sewer fund. You've got some impact fee money that's going in to help fund those as well. But it is again, very commonly used. We see it a lot for, for equipment and facilities because that project that's being financed in essence serves as the security for the financing. We don't typically see lease purchase financing used for road improvements or storm drainage improvements just because there's not really anything there to be leased. When investors purchase this type of a financing, they're looking to what, what can they get their arms around, what serves as security? And if it's just asphalt or firms and gathers and sidewalk, well, that's not, not much value from a banker's standpoint. And so that's why, like with streetscape and other projects, why we typically think if you're not going to do it page you go, we typically think we'll bond it, do general obligation bond for that, that type of approval. But for what you're talking about with the sewer improvements, it certainly makes sense and we think that would continue to go down that ground as that project comes to fruition. Which, that kind of brings us to the second creek bridge discussion and knowing I just on one hand said, that type of a project doesn't lend itself to a COP financing and now I'm going to talk about and say why in this particular instance it does. And the reason why this is an option is one, you're considering a sewer COP financing. So you're already getting ready to move forward with, with COPs. You could easily add this project to the COP financing for the simple reason that it would be secured by the sewer improvements, not by this bridge. You're not going to lease this bridge. The security for the financing is going to be the sewer improvements. So the fact that the timing is right really is what makes this an option for you to consider if it's something you wanted to do. And unlike the sewer improvements where we know we're going to look to sewer rates and your sewer fund to make that payment, in this instance, you still have to identify where's the money going to come from and make that lease payment. So we still, that's, that's a discussion that needs to be had. And then the other part of this is what's the length of time, if you chose to go this route, what's the amortization period of the length of time that you'd like to pay it back?
Are there any specific questions? As Mr. Goffey indicated, this one is kind of unique. It was a shock to me whenever he and I discussed it following our streetscape meetings a couple of weeks ago, that this was even an option. And as he indicated, it was the timing of it. Since we're talking about roughly a million for the Second Creek Bridge project, which came into fruition simply because we anticipate that bridge is going to be reduced to a three ton bridge by August of next year, similar to what happened with 180th Street for low those many years, six, seven years. And the impact that had, this will give us the opportunity to move forward on that project simultaneously with the sewer project. Depending on the circumstances, we may be able to do some economy of scale. Currently, the sewer project is planning on boring under Second Creek when they bring the sewer line through, about 120 feet away from this project. So if they do come together, there is a possibility we can combine the two and do a complete open cut because plan is to have the, the bridge go in with the road closed. So if they're coming in and digging a 22 foot deep trench that's eight foot wide, instead of digging those big holes and putting a boring machine under it, pushing that through, you know, that's in and of itself is probably 150 to 200,000 to push it through versus digging through. Could potentially save us some money there as well. But it has to go as one package and we're getting ready to put the sewer stuff out for bid. So not a lot of long-term timeframe to think. We have to get our eyes or hands around it a little bit. It likely means Mr. Goffey will have to get you some projections on where you want to go, but we wanted to start the process so he could explain it to you. You can ask questions, but then rather quickly we'll have to have a decision.
We'll see the details.
I'd like to ask Todd a couple of questions. Do you have to talk about, if you're a member of this board, what would you see as an improvement? And it sounds like you need to make the improvement to the bridge, so that doesn't sound like that's optional. And so if you don't have a million dollars cash to make the payment, then I think including it as part of the COP financing makes sense. Now, the question, still the open question is, how long do you, do we finance it for? Is this something you want to pay it back in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? That's, that's to be decided. And then how, what's the repayment source? Is it just going to be budgeted at the general fund? Is it going to come out of transportation sales tax dollars over time? So that, that's, that's kind of the second part of that. Well, I guess partly too, because anytime you have a, I guess a sewer, that doesn't come out of water.
Well, it comes out of, depending, it'll come out of the enterprise portion of it. We have water and sewer in that separately. So it'll be a part of the utility bill, but some of that's already been built in to the pricing. This proposal also includes refinancing all our existing COPs to take that money into this payment as well. Refunding one or two, I think, completely, refunding two completely, so we're no longer paying those. And then using that existing revenue to pay this and then using some most likely transportation sales tax funds to add in to get the bridge in it.
So the two COPs that you're looking at, pre-funding or paying off, are those through the water department, through the sewer now, correct?
Yes.
So you just replace the two with the one?
Yes.
And I know that payment for the sewer project comes from the water department, correct?
Yeah, it comes from.
In a roundabout way.
Yeah.
It's in that dedicated fund, I would call it, when you look at the departments, to where the bridge would come out of either the general or that transportation tax, correct?
And transportation sales tax is part of the general, but it's a very specific, it can only go to transportation, which lends itself why this would be the most appropriate location.
Did you happen to bring anything on that specific transportation tax or can bring that to?
I don't, yeah, I can give you something, I don't have.
I need to see that.
What do we, what do you want to see?
Well, what do we have in the transportation portion? What do we have there as far as available funding?
143,000 right now, I believe.
Cash and reserves.
Cash and reserves, 143, plus.
How much are we ending?
420,000, something like that.
2050, in that range.
So I guess, talking about funding the bridge, we also took on what, over eight miles of additional road that we're now responsible for maintaining as well. Do we have any cost estimates on what that might be on an annual basis?
Not specifically, it's just built into the normal street.
Yeah, it's about a 6% increase in the amount of streets, given the general condition. At this point, we're not as concerned with major repairs. We're going to have road repairs. The next big one will be on Mount Olivet once we get it scoped. But it will, it's adding 6% of our plowing.
And just, you know, without, without other obligations.
To kind of get where we're going, I think, right now, so we're.
Because like if we did this.
Yeah, so right now we're getting in about 420, 450,000 in transportation sales tax money. Those funds.
Those funds, that, that revenue is, is budgeted in street expenditures as it sits right now.
How far along are we with the road tax district?
I'm not even.
I'm sorry?
I'm not even.
I assume that one has to be by January twenty-third to the county, prior to that.
Does that go have to go to the state, though?
No, it goes to the county.
I was under the understanding, per discussion with the county, that it would have to go to the state.
I don't think it is.
Okay, I, that's, because I was surprised when I heard that, so I hadn't done any research.
The money that are collected, the Marvin go tax go to the county, it's a tally, but it's first.
According to the statute, the city has to, it's fifty citizens have to submit a petition. Seven of you may want to do it here, that kind of thing. And then once you get fifty signatures, that petition gets certified by the county and it goes to the county commission to put it on the ballot. That's my understanding of how it is. The question is what the language is.
When you get into the petition period, you've got to get legal description of the city. County doesn't have legal descriptions. You have it by several different parcels between the process of getting and ultimately having put together. So it's, it's.
So we don't want to.
You're talking about a road district, you're talking about you have to go to the voters and say, this is the road district, and this is the legal for the road district. And you go to our accessory law office, they can't even have a single legal for our city.
Okay.
So how does the accessory law, if they don't have. They have several different parcels that were in the process of getting. They loan together and they send out tax bill, but our process having put together a petition is not going to be.
Can I request we get it all together?
And that's, and that's one of the things that we're trying to get our hands around because if you look at our map on the G I S, you'll see a whole bunch of white spots in the middle. That's the difficulty. We're, the people that haven't annexed in, because we haven't done a election annexation since nineteen-seventy-two, everything else has been voluntary annexation. Some folks decided not to join. So we've got gours.
The developer did not properly record it, so they were properly annexed, annexed per city's. We didn't do that. And we can go and request from those people if there is an incentive for them to do that. For example, I know those who are not in the city, they have a higher water and sewer rate than those who are in the city.
But ultimately, that's a fix for something down the road. We're trying to get the legal description as we sit down.
I got you.
So that we can move quicker. But it's not a simple, oh, just, you know.
Because my brother's one of those who lives out on Sunshine Drive that has got city all around him, and he's not city, and he will never voluntarily annex.
Yeah.
He's got a target range out in his property, he just goes out in his backyard, shoots. Neighbors call the police all the time. Nothing I can do about it because he lives in the county.
I want to see what sort of an annexation they're not going to.
Yeah, and ultimately.
But we don't want to do that and solve this other stuff up.
Right. Not kick too many more than that's time.
Right, well, yeah, what we want to do now is to look at the road and bridge tax, which will capture existing city tax dollars that are going to the county to capture.
And going to other cities.
Other, yeah, but ultimately to keep Smithville residents' tax dollars in Smithville. Currently seventy-five percent of their tax dollars on that go to the county fund for roads, wherever they may be.
You have to ask them if we form.
It's about ninety, right?
Yeah, ninety to a hundred in that range, additional revenue.
By the way, we're a little off. We're really only seeing.
Right. But ultimately, those are potential revenue sources for these C O Ps as well.
So maybe if it was clear, if that district's formed, that those monies aren't yours. It's a road district.
They decide, we don't.
That's why it's so important to make sure it's only the existing city limits. Because then they can't spend the dollars on any land. You still have control of your streets.
Very good. Are there any other questions for Todd? The only other thing I can point out on combining the C O Ps, we want to make sure we would have a very clear and separate amortization schedule for the bridge project versus the sewer projects. So even though we're talking about a single issue, that's how it would be marketed, but we would have it broken out to where we know exactly how much goes in each focus. Hey. Well, Todd, thank you very much for being here. I have made some great additions. We need to sit that for a little while.
It's going to be just quick.
I move to adjourn to executive section pursuant to of section six-ten dot zero-two-one-one of R S M O.
Second. Second. Alton.
Hi.
Alton.
Hi.
Alton.
Hi.
Alton.
Hi.
Sixteen.
We stand to adjourn to executive section.
Thanks. I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to get to.
I looked at speedway time, somebody's going to ask.